Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our Borough, our monthly Borough Council meeting, both in person and virtually. We're glad that you've joined us here tonight for this meeting. During the public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually, and staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name, and then you'll be able to speak. We will start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us tonight, and then go to those joining us remotely on the Zoom platform. We'll have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning and one towards the end of the night. And then also during the conditional use hearing or public hearing portions of the agenda. We do ask the public participation be limited to once per each session. And with that, we will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and start the meeting. All right. Thank you, everybody, for joining us here tonight. We'll start with a roll call. Mr. Manager.
Ms. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Carmenito.
President.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant. Lieutenant, you have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. With that, we have no presentations on tonight's agenda, so we will open up the first round of public participation. Again, we'll start with those members of the public who are joining us here in council chambers. We do ask that you limit participation to three minutes or less, and please state your name and address and sign in on the sign-in sheet at the podium. So any members of the public tonight who wish to make comment, please step up to the podium and uh first round is open.
My name is Dennis Spencer-Mocker. I was here last month. You said three minutes. Okay, we'll try to do that.
And where do you live, Dennis?
I live on thirty-seven East Grant Street on the north side.
Got it.
We are having a severe problem on our street. And I will, I took notes about all the specific things that have been done to me by an individual because I'm trying to get him to stop parking junk on the street. And when I say junk, I do mean junk because I brought my inspection license, if anyone wants to see it, to prove that I do know what I'm talking about here. You're not allowed to be driving cars around, whether it's in this borough or anywhere else in the state, with holes in your car this big that you can put your fist through. The reason? Because the jagged metal will cut people bit worse when they get sideswiped. So he has on his prep, well, along the road, two to three, perhaps even four cars that got licked and sticked with a sticker. And is there anyone who would like to see my license? I'll gladly show it to you. I, I myself would condemn those cars. I wouldn't even let them in if I was still working to inspect cars. But I am now retired, and I really would like to have some understanding about the problems we have with this individual. He just, he, he walks to the beat of a different drum. He just, regardless of what you do, you just can't seem to get them under control. The other day, after I took them to court, unfortunately, I couldn't be at the court case because my brother passed away the same day. But when I came home from the hospital, I found these, they're, they're long rivets. Well, actually, what they are is staples, and they go through, through with a pneumatic gun. I got two minutes. I got one more minute. He had thrown them underneath his truck, so they rolled out in front of my driveway. I realized, addressing this committee, that I should be talking to the police. The unfortunate thing is, by the time I get to the police, they always come up with, did you catch a picture of him doing this? And I, I've got a list of things that I just don't have time to go over with you, of things that he's done to me, my property that just don't sit right, and they shouldn't be going on. I have an attorney at the moment, O M V M Law, but that attorney is going to be addressing my brother's estate. And all I'm asking for is your understanding in this matter, and I think my three minutes are up. Can I go on just one? Here's, here's just a microcosm of the things that I wrote down on this paper. The first one was inspection and insurance. You gotta have insurance before you get your car inspected. I used to tell customers, give me your insurance card, otherwise I can't inspect your car. And if it had a hole, even half the size of my hand, it got rejected because it was my job, and it was the owner's job, if that car got out into the public and it wasn't roadworthy. You lose a ten thousand dollar license, your overall license, for doing things like that. Here are some of the other things I wrote down. I showed you the staples. Actually, I beat him in court because what he said to me was so horrific. A policeman, not a rookie, but a seasoned policeman of the police force here in Phoenixville, did not want to hear me repeat what was said to me. He just couldn't take it. I'll just read one more, and then I'll spare you the rest of the grief. But I'm, I've resided in Phoenixville for thirty-five years, and I'm proud of my town. I, I chose to live here, and I chose to live on the north side. I do love living in this borough. Here's the last thing that I think this committee should know. He came down the hill on East Emmett Street one day when I was walking my dog with a neighbor at fifty to sixty miles an hour, and I saw a woman come out, elderly woman, and I said to her, man, don't bring your child, your grandchildren out on this street unless you've got a hold of their hand because one of your children is going to get killed. There's a man up over on the hill. He drives like a maniac, and it'll be too late once he hits your children. Thank you very much for your time. I'm going to sign out. I'll probably come back next month to check on the progress that is being made. I'm aware of internal progress being made that I really don't want to talk about because there are things getting back to Mr. Wagner that I'm a little perplexed at. Thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Absolutely.
Thank you again.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other members joining us tonight in our council chambers that wish to make public comment? Any members on Zoom, if you'd like to raise your hand digitally, if there's any members on our Zoom platform that would like to make comment during this first round of public participation, we will have other rounds later tonight. Seeing no members raising their hand or stepping to the podium, virtually or in person, we'll close this first round of public participation. We'll move on to item five, which are, is tonight's consent agenda. Are there any items on tonight's consent agenda that need further clarification, questioning, or simply removing and adding to later in the agenda? Any items on the, Ms. Berkeley?
May we please remove item two, which is
B two?
B two, yeah, B two. And add it to later in the agenda.
Okay, we'll move that down to Parks and Rec Committee reports. Any other items on tonight's agenda or tonight's consent agenda? Yeah. Seeing none, what is council's pleasure for tonight's consent agenda minus B two?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Much my Mr. Carmenito, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And that will take us down to item six, communications and council participation. I will start off this round. We've had a very, I think, notable, notable week, the last ten days or so. I don't think there's been a time where I thought we would get mentioned in our governor's State of the Budget address. So I wanted to just take a moment to actually read the quote that he said about Phoenixville Borough because I'm so astonished that we were, we were called out in such a supportive and endearing way. So if you'll bear with me here for this, and this is our governor last Tuesday for, I think it was last Tuesday for the the budget statement address. So his words were, one thing I've always loved about Pennsylvania is no matter what, no matter where you are, every place has a main street, and those main streets matter. But unfortunately, too many of our main streets, like so many of those I've walked with, so many of you, haven't had the kind of investment they need to keep them, to help them thrive again. We've seen communities like Newcastle get hollowed out, but we've also seen what communities like Phoenixville can become when the Commonwealth invests in their vision. I don't think there's been kind of words spoken from a higher office pertaining to the, what we've been doing here in the borough for the last almost twenty years now. And it is a testament to what our staff, what our previous council, our current council, all of our boards and committees, all of our residents have been working towards. Yeah, for everybody who's been here since the before times to know where we've come from and what we've gone through to get here, it's remarkable. So I do appreciate all the trying times that we go through, both residents and council here. There are growing pains, there are changes, but on the grand scheme of things, this, we've been on such an upward trajectory that it's something to be proud of. And so I wanted to start off our communications with that. So anybody else? Right? Mr. Kirchner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge the passing of Neil Donahue, who was longtime chief at Friendship Fire Company back when Friendship was a fire company before it was only a water rescue unit. And Neil, longtime Northsider, and I wanted to express condolences to his family, his brother, Ed and sister-in-law Cindy, with whom he'd been living up on the north side these past few, few months, and also his nephew Daniel. So, but we appreciate his years of service to the north side with the Friendship Fire Company. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Kirk, I do appreciate the kind words from Neil and his family, and I appreciate your work always. It's a, I know it's a slightly dubious honor to always have to be the one to, to bring to the table, but you certainly have the institutional knowledge of many of the constituents. So I do appreciate that. I just want to mention one other thing. Yesterday, one more thank you. I wanted to thank the Office of, again, with the governor, the Office of Critical Investments. We had the pleasure of providing a tour to, to the executive director of that office and some of his staff for Phoenix Neo. So yesterday, a number of our staff and four members of his staff came down to visit this, which again, I think is, is a tremendous realization of what we're working towards here. So they, they gave us way more time than I would have expected from any high-level elected official, and probably asked the best questions of any of our tour participants thus far. So I do appreciate Brian Regley, Louis Crack, Heather Cowley, and Dave Wade for coming down and taking the tour. And hopefully, good things come from, from having them visit this important project that we're about to kick off. Okay. And with that, any other council communications or participation? Okay, we'll move on to Mayor's report. Mayor Ursula.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you all so much for being here today, those in the chamber, and those of you who are tuning in at home. A couple of things to just highlight. Certainly, in the last month, we've had Orion Communities Casino Night, an incredible organization of neighbors helping neighbors right here on Bridge Street. Be sure to check out Orion. Also, the Saint Peter and Saint Paul on the north side had an incredible Remembrance Day celebration for the one-year anniversary of the war in Ukraine, to remember those families who have certainly lost loved ones and those who have been impacted by that war. So just keep that community certainly in your thoughts. Also, our Phoenixville Community Education Foundation had their incredible Phantom fundraiser close to twenty thousand dollars. They did about eighteen thousand dollars in three minutes this year, and all of that funding helps to support programs within our school district that may not be there if it weren't for these generous donations to the PCF, which is the Phoenixville Community Education Foundation and its nonprofit that supports students within our district. Also, just a little shout out, if you haven't had the opportunity to do so, or if you would ever be interested in joining, we have an extraordinarily active VFW right on Star Street. I went the other night for their exciting shrimp night. I highly suggest it. If you can find it coming up again, go visit them for their shrimp night. Also, a shout out to our White Horse Rugby Team, who played their only home game this season. They did win against a team from North Philly. So if you haven't had a chance to watch one of those games, they are exciting, and they're right on Friendship Field next to our rec center. Also, just want to encourage everyone, I want to wish you a happy Saint Patrick's Day, and also encourage everyone to be safe. Certainly, check out, some of the news stations will be covering Phoenixville in the next couple of days. Also encourage you to use the Uber and Lyft CarShare program lanes, which will be across from Molly Maguire's, right next to our main and Bridge Street parking lot. So that's a great pickup and drop-off. We would definitely encourage people, don't drive, and take a chance, make sure that you are using those resources available to you. Also, coming up this next month will be the Chamber's Award Dinner, and certainly want to add in the congratulations to everyone here tonight for the Phoenixville Borough of Phoenixville. I almost said Phoenixville Chamber, but it is the Chamber Awards Dinner. The Borough of Phoenixville has been awarded a Chairman's Award for our Firehouse and Rec Center projects. So congratulations, certainly, as President Ewald said, to all of you, to our staff, all of our elected officials, and all of our volunteers, and certainly all of our residents who make this possible. Also, coming up, we have the J C's Keg and Egg Hunt coming up soon. Check that out on phoenixvillejc.org. And then after that, it kind of goes into the Easter season. So any families out there who are celebrating, we certainly wish you well during that season. So thank you so much. Thanks for being here, and thanks for being part of this incredible community.
Thank you, Mayor Ursula. For appointments tonight under section third, section eight of our agenda, we do have vacancies on a number of our boards and committees. Just to name a few of the ones that we expect to still have vacancies after tonight. We have an opening on Harb, on our, on Rec Board, Zoning Hearing Board, and Human Relations Committee. So members of the public, if you live in the borough, please reach out, and if you're living in the borough and you're interested in joining one of our various boards or committees, please reach out to your councilperson or staff, and we'd be happy to walk you through the process of, of any of these boards or committees that you might be interested in. They are rewarding, and they don't take up that much time. So moving on to new business, we have three items tonight under new business. The first is a consideration of that application for, to our zoning hearing board. Do we want some background before motion or? Mr. Crack?
Just rather quickly, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, as I say, on the, on the agenda. It's, it's a special exception because it's, there's a current non-conforming use that has moved on to other things, and now we have somebody that's in town. Most, many of you know, it's a plumbing firm that would like to use that building. And it's for storage and space and warehouse and what have you. So from our perspective, it's a great find to replace that, that that building with another use, but it is a special exception. So.
Sure, I would just add. You know, a special exception is similar to a conditional use, whereas a permitted use, however, they have to prove that they meet certain conditions in order to engage in that permitted use. The difference is, instead of being before Borough Council, the conditional use, it's before the zoning hearing board is a special exception. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, municipal governing boards do not take a position on zoning hearing board applications. If that is the pleasure of council tonight, no action necessary. You don't need to vote to take no action. However, if you feel strongly for or feel strongly opposed, or want to feel strongly that our interests should be represented, then you would have to take action. I would say my suggestion as solicitor would be that this is the type of application that typically you allow the zoning hearing board to, to do their thing.
I'll just offer to my colleagues in the council that this was discussed last Thursday at the Planning Commission meeting. And the commission members thought it was a good idea, had no objection. There's no vote or anything on it, but it's taking a, you know, a workhorse building and continuing to make it a workhorse building. And we just have to do some of the steps that have to be taken, as Scott said, to make it, make it okay.
It seems pretty straightforward to me, and just, I guess, for a point of order, a matter of the public, the special exception is because it's residential in Phil, and they're using it for purposes of a business. But this building looks like it's been used previously for, as Mr. Moore mentioned, similar purposes, a warehouse for a business. Is that correct? Just to make sure everybody in the public understands.
Right. So the special exception is because it's currently a non-conforming use. And you are allowed to change from one non-conforming use under our zoning ordinance to another in the zoning district if it is a less intense non-conforming use, and that's what they're going to have to prove at their zoning hearing board here.
So really, again, the only vote we would be making is if we would be sending you, and this seems pretty straightforward.
Correct. Any other questions or comments? It seems like a welcome addition, and it looks like reading through the notes, it's a, it'll be a nice rehabilitation and proper reuse of the existing property. So seeing no action, we'll move on to item B.
I'll make a motion to award the twenty twenty-three chemical bid for ammonium sulfate to the next lowest responsible bidder, which is Brent and Tag Northeast.
Second. Any questions on the bidding process here?
I'll just give a quick back, background, if I may. As you may remember, last month, we terminated the contract of the lowest bidder for breach of contract. That happened in between last meeting and this meeting, and now we need a supplier. So Brent Tag Northeast was the next lowest bidder, so we're looking to award them the contract.
So we had a motion. For a second.
Second.
Sorry, much by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, sorry about that. Any other questions on the, on the bid? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And lastly, under new business, we have a civil service recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve the Civil Service Commission Resolution for Adoption dated March sixth, twenty twenty-three, which recommends changes to their rules and regulations. Second.
Much by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on these changes to the civil services rules and regulations?
Mr. President, or I may, I'm kind of doing some editing on the fly here, but in the, the third sentence, I got hung up on the word "may." It reads, "To be eligible to apply for a position in the police department, an applicant must have satisfactorily completed or must be currently enrolled in a Pennsylvania Act one twenty-approved Police Academy Training Curriculum and may be required to qualify after instruction with police-issue firearm." Is that an option for our police officers that they may qualify, or must they qualify?
So it's a shall qualify. Every police officer has to qualify with their firearm, and they have to do it yearly.
Okay. So if it's shall, it, it seems it should be stronger than "may." Because "may" implies that they may or may not.
So the, the essence of this amendment is to be able to make offers before graduation, correct? Am I understanding that correctly? So would those qualifications not happen at graduation? Would there be additional training and qualifications that need to happen once hired? I think that's where maybe it might be more clear. That's
So, once they were hired, so they do, they go through training at the academy as well, but once they're hired as a condition of their employment with us in our policy and procedure manual, they shall re-qualify with their firearms, along with many other things, and that's something that has to happen every year.
So do we just need to make that edit and amend the motion?
But are we talking about the sentence that starts, "to be eligible to apply for the position?"
No.
Yes, yes.
But right after.
Yeah, it says "may," but, but again, this, they may be required to do this, to be eligible to apply, not to be eligible to be employed. So I think it's in there to provide flexibility in the application process, but not in the hiring process, is how I interpret it.
Okay. And, and once they're here, our policies would kick in, and our policy would require that they would be certified on their firearm. They would pass a physical and also a psychological evaluation.
A good question. I think it's good to discuss, but it does sound like "may" is the right word, and then it becomes a "shall" on hiring, so.
This is really just contingent on in being able to apply, not employment.
Any other questions on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Okay, moving on, we have a number of resolutions and, and one ordinance tonight. In between the resolutions, we'll be reading these into the record, so we can go in that order. What is council's pleasure for item A under Resolutions, Section ten?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging Eric Schmidt for his service on the Beautification Advisory Commission. Second.
Motion by Ms. Webb, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Just as some background, last month, after ten years, the BAC was, was sunset and has, is now part of the Parks and Rec Standing Committee. So that's why we're doing these acknowledgements of the service that the members of this committee provided on the BAC. So we do appreciate, I know, I think Eric was one of the original members. And, and he, he was certainly tremendous amount of information that he has. So any other questions or any other comments on this motion?
I would just also give a nod to Eric. I've gotten to work with him closely, and the planters downtown, he definitely was very dedicated to those and has done a lot of work for those. So thank you for that service specifically.
And that will continue. You know, this is, all the, all the tasks and responsibilities we've, we've found can be done elsewise, so it will continue. So any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. We'll take the moment to read the resolution to the record. This is number eight on the year, "A Resolution of Gratitude for the Public Service of Eric Schmidt as a member of the Beautification Advisory Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania, whereas Eric Schmidt served diligently and honorably as a original member and vice chairman of the Beautification Advisory Commission since September tenth, twenty thirteen, and whereas Mr. Schmidt provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Beautification Advisory Commission and Provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Beautification Advisory Commission and Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Eric for all of his efforts. And commitment to the borough in performing his dedicated responsibilities over the past uh ten years. Now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council, the Borough of Phoenixville, that Eric Schmidt is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment. And efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes on his future endeavors, so. Thank you, Eric, for for all the work thus far. Uh next up, we have item B.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution acknowledging Michael Hill for his service on the Beautification Beautification Advisory Commission. The second.
We have a motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Miss Webb, questions on the motion. Again, Mr. Hill was the other found was one of the other founding members. Um so certainly an invaluable amount of um effort put into many of the uh the murals, the planters, the utility boxes. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? I opposed, motion carries eight zero. I will now uh read in resolution number nine on the year. A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Michael Hill as a member of the Beautification Advisory Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Michael Hill served diligently and honorably as an original member of the Beautification Advisory Commission since September tenth, twenty thirteen. And whereas Mr. Hill provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Beautiful Beautification Advisory Commission and Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation. To Michael Hill for all of his efforts and commitment to the borough in performing his dedicated responsibilities over the past ten years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council, the Borough of Phoenixville, that Michael Hill is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment. And efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors. Thank you, Michael.
Um I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging Jane Dougdale for her service on the Beautification Advisory Commission. Second.
Very good. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I opposed, motion carries eight zero. I will now read in resolution number ten on the year. A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Jane Dougdale as a member of the Beautification Advisory Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Jane Dougdale, well, sorry, whereas Jane Dougdale served diligently and honorably as a member of the Beautification Advisory Commission since October thirteenth, twenty twenty. And whereas Miss Dougdale provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Beautiful Beautification Advisory Commission. And Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Jane Dougdale for all of her efforts. And commitment to the borough in performing her dedicated responsibilities over the past three years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Jane Dougdale is recognized and publicly acknowledged. For her commitment and efforts in performing her duties and further does offer their best wishes in her future endeavors. Thank you, Jane. I know Jane's here tonight and I uh during our consent agenda, we reapply her right away to tree advisory commission, so. The work does not stop. With that, we'll move on to item D.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging Tom Ransom for his service on the Beautification Advisory Commission. Second.
Motion by Miss Webb, second by Miss Berkeley, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I opposed, motion carries eight zero. Uh resolution number eleven on the year. A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Tom Tom Ransom as a member of the Beautification Advisory Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Now whereas Tom Ransom served diligently and honorably as a member of the Beautification Advisory Commission since September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas Mr. Ransom provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Beautification Advisory Commission. And Phoenix will Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Tom Ransom. For all of his efforts and commitment to the borough and performing his dedicated responsibilities over the past two years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Tom Ransom is recognized and publicly acknowledged. For his commitment and efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors. Thank you, Tom.
I'd also like to make a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging Vincent Tavani for his service on the Beautification Advisory Commission.
Second, the motion by Miss Webb, second by Mr. Carmenito, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I opposed. Motion carries eight zero. With that, I will read in resolution number twelve on the year. A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Vincent Tavani as a member of the Borough as a member of the. Beautification Advisory Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Vincent Tavani served diligently and honorably as a member of the Beautification Advisory Commission since January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Whereas Mr. Tavani provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Beautiful Beautification Advisory Commission. As well as the Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Vincent Tavani. For all of his efforts and commitment to the borough in performing his dedicated responsibilities over the past year. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Vincent Tavani. Is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment and efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors. Again, thank you, Vincent, for um serving on our BAC. And lastly, that brings us to item F under uh council resolutions. What is council's pleasure?
Mister President, I'll make a motion um to adopt a resolution acknowledging Shan Lee Fisher for her service on the Recreation Board. Second.
Much my Miss Berkeley, second by Miss Webb, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I opposed. Motion carries eight zero, and with that, we'll read in tonight's final resolution, number thirteen on the year. A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Shane Lee Fisher as a member of the Recreation Board for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Shane Lee Fisher served diligently and honorably as a member of the Phoenixville Recreation Board since June eighth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas Miss Fisher provided an invaluable service to the Phoenixville Recreation Board and Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its thanks and full appreciation to Shane Lee Fisher. For all of her efforts and commitment to the Recreation Board while performing her duties. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Shane Lee Fisher is recognized and publicly acknowledged for her commitment and efforts in performing her duties. And further does offer their best wishes in her future endeavors. Uh appreciation to Shane Lee Fisher for uh serving on our rec board for the last few years. Um we we appreciate everybody who does spend time on our boards and committees, and again, we have openings and vacancies. Um available to those who want to help take part in town governance. With that, we'll move on to item G of tonight's uh resolutions and ordinances agenda or agenda section.
Mister Kirk. Mister President, I'll make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending chapter six. Conduct it's a a new part four for noise. It's a new noise ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Mister Kirkner, second by Miss Berkeley. Questions on the motion, um any background needed? So this is one that we've discussed pretty diligently uh during policy the last few months. Uh Scott, do you have anything you want to add or?
Uh I'm happy to, so uh. Probably over the past. Ten years, a lot of municipalities have started to take out the requirements from their noise ordinance that uses particular decibel levels. Um and that's because decimal meters are expensive, they have to be uh inspected and recalibrated annually, which is. Expensive, and then you have to have people who know how to use them. Um and then oftentimes the noise complaints, the decimal meters not on hand when the noise complaint is, you know, happening, the noise is happening, so. Um this was uh an item that, you know, we had a recent issue with some noise. The decibel uh inclusion in our ordinance wasn't practical and it's I I'd say. You know, of of the municipalities in the greater Philadelphia area, all of them are moving away from. Uh having specific decibel levels, and that's what this uh ordinance amendment accomplishes.
That's perfectly.
I would just say, just because I've gotten these complaints as from constituents and I've worked with the police department. Um to help kind of rectify some of those things, and that is one of the biggest challenges that they face too, I'm sure. Um Lieutenant McIntyre can speak to that as well. Um so it's something that's in full support, I I think, from the police department as well, and. And was, as you said, very much vetted through policy, so.
I I do have a question, so how would we? How how would we typically, like I asked the lieutenant, how would we typically enforce this? I mean. You do we have to train the police to how to respond to these kind of complaints or how? Let's see enforcement mechanism once once we bring this fully into play.
So each officer would have individual training on how to enforce it, and it's. It's essentially, it's the rule of thumb, it's what's reasonable for the for the time the noise is being committed. Obviously, the noise level at one o'clock in the afternoon versus the noise level at three AM are gonna be two different things. Uh the problem with measuring a noise decimal like um we're discussing here tonight is. A having the equipment, making sure that it's been recertified, and then having a certified user because. It's one of the things that the courts themselves aren't even really accepting anymore, so it's 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 really just kinda. Uh an outdated form of of enforcing it.
Uh the other kind of question I had, and this is more um for Scott, I think mainly, and also the members of the Policy Committee, so. Uh item D about loading and unloading boxes, crates, containers and so forth between the hours of nine PM and one day and seven AM the next. This under the specific prohibitions. There in such a manner as to create an unreasonable noise, so you might have, I mean, we have plenty of restaurants that are like. You know, filling their dumpsters at eleven or twelve o'clock because they're cleaning out their kitchens. That's not. Unreasonable because it's according to the definition of unreasonable, it's the normal activity, right? So I guess I wanna make sure that the unreasonable term is has enough currency to be enforceable.
Right, I mean, what's reasonable is a very spec back specific circumstance. Uh so in general, I'd say you're right, however, I don't want to say. You're right in every situation for every restaurant. If if a restaurant has the loudest dumpster known to man. Um even though they're only doing it one night uh or once per night, um. You know, maybe that's not reasonable anymore, so um I I think in in general you are correct, but each circumstance has to be taken individually.
If I may, Mister President, first off, I I wanna thank uh private staff and the solicitor for. For the the legwork that went into putting this new ordinance together. Um I. Really appreciate the the definition of unreasonable noise, specifically the last part of that. Um in that quote, it prevents, disrupts, injures, or endangers the health, safety. Welfare, comfort, or repose of reasonable persons of ordinary sensitivities. Within the Borough of Phoenixville, unquote. I really like that uh welfare, comfort, or repose. Part, I think, uh I I the looking at the the existing ordinance and this new ordinance, I really think. This um cleans it up quite a bit and makes it more enforceable. For uh the police department and staff, so so kudos to the solicitor and staff for. For working, updating this and working on this.
Any other questions on the motion? Oh echo Rich, I think this was a a great update and uh the last one was untenable, so this one's better and. Uh you know, constantly improving and revising uh is a good thing to to be doing, so. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries eight zero. That brings us to section eleven of tonight's agenda hearings. We are, we have a conditional use item on the agenda. To for over to Mister Denlinger, our borough solicitor. Do we need a motion first?
Uh however we'd like to do it, I can ask for a motion. Is there a motion to recess the public meeting and open a hearing on the conditional use application?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I opposed.
Eight zero. Uh all right, so uh before I get into my normal introduction, uh you will notice this evening that. Our court reporter has not reported. Um so I I have spoken to the applicant. But now that we are officially on the record, uh I would like to ask the applicant and the applicant's attorney. Uh we record our meetings, uh is it acceptable to you uh to continue with this hearing? And the record will be uh the recording of the hearing, and if necessary, uh we will transcribe the hearing um from the recording.
Yes, that is acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh while while you're at the podium, why don't you introduce yourself?
Absolutely. My name is Gina Gerber. I'm here on behalf of the applicant this evening. They are proposing a pet boys. Um location in the uh existing shopping center. This is gonna be an approximately eleven thousand five hundred. Square foot facility. We are here this evening because we are seeking conditional use approval for a portion of this use. Um pursuant to section twenty-seven dash three oh one point two A one of your zoning ordinance. Um the automos automotive sales and service use, which is approximately ten thousand square feet. Of this building is permitted by conditional use in this particular district, so that is what we are here for this evening. And just for clarification, there is a small component of approximately fifteen hundred square feet. Um associated with this use that is considered an auto supply store or retail office. That particular component is permitted by right in this district, so this application is very limited just to this portion. Of the use relating to the sales and service portion.
Thank you, Miss Gerber. I'm gonna go into my introduction, which is a little lengthy, so I apologize.
If I may, I'm gonna pass around some exhibits while you.
Absolutely, please do. So as Miss Gerber summarized, uh we received a conditional use application from hardware. Hardware Landlord LP and Arnold Anderson, and this application concerns the property located at seven hundred Nut Road. Suite, I believe, five forty, uh which is a parcel within the commonly known Phoenixville Plaza. Uh this property consists of approximately one point three nine acres of land and is located in the borough's C D corridor development zoning district. The nature of a conditional use application is that a conditional use is technically a permitted use under the zoning ordinance. Provided that the applicant for the conditional use demonstrates two things. One is qualification or entitlement to the conditional use under the criteria that are set forth in the zoning ordinance. And two, that there is no unanticipated adverse effect to the public health, safety, or welfare. In terms of procedure for this hearing, the applicant will present its case first. The applicant has the burden of proof, so the applicant will present whatever witnesses, testimony and evidence it chooses to in an in an attempt to carry that burden. The board can then ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. Any parties, which I will explain in a minute, will be given a chance to also ask questions. After the applicant is finished with with its case, any parties may present their own testimony and evidence. Prior to the conclusion of the hearing, there will be an opportunity for anyone in the audience to make a statement for or against the application. You do not need to be a party to express your opinion during the comment period. With regard to becoming a party to this matter, party sta- status is entirely optional. As I mentioned before. Anyone who wishes to make a comment for or against the application will be permitted to do so. You don't have to be a party to make comment. There are certain qualifications to party status, and it is necessary that you be what the municipality's planning code calls an affected or an aggrieved party. That is someone who could actually be impacted positively or negatively by the application and the proposed use. Beyond someone, uh just any person living in the borough. You would be subject to cross-examination from the applicant as to whether or not you live close enough to really be uniquely impacted by the application. In addition to being allowed to question witnesses and present evidence of their own. A party is also entitled to receive a copy of the board's decision and take an appeal of that decision to the Court of Common Police, should they wish to do so. With that, is there anyone here in person who wishes to be a party to the matter? Uh seeing none, is there anyone uh virtually who wishes to be a party to the matter? Um also known, also none, excuse me. Uh before I turn it over to the applicant, I will mark the borough's exhibits. Exhibit B one, conditional use application submitted by Hardware Landlord LP and Arnold Anderson dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. And received by the borough on January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit B two, addendum to conditional use application prepared by Longview Property Group. Exhibit B three, plan ten sheets entitled tenant improvements for Pet Boys Service Center, prepared by MK Architects dated December twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit B four, applicant extension letter dated February twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit B five, true and correct copy of section twenty-seven, three oh one, two A one of the Phoenixville Borough's zoning ordinance as of the date of the submission of the application. Exhibit B six, public notice for this conditional use hearing. Exhibit B seven, proof of publication of the notice from the Pottstown Mercury, verifying that tonight's hearing was advertised on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three and March sixth, twenty twenty-three. We do not yet have that exhibit, uh, but it will be a part of our exhibit list when available. Exhibit B eight, affidavit of posting a public notice at the property owner before March seventh, twenty twenty-three. And exhibit B nine, affidavit of mailing of public notice owner before March seventh, twenty twenty-three, and a list of properties and persons that were mailed notice of tonight's hearing by first-class mail. Um, and with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Gerber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denlinger. The, this evening, we are talking about a property that is at seven hundred Nut Road. It's approximately one point three nine acres. It's UPI number fifteen dash eight dash sixteen point one. As was indicated, the applicant is Hardware Landlord LP. I'm joined this evening by a representative of the landlord who is going to speak a little bit um, about the property. This is Mr. Arnold Anderson. I'm also joined this evening by a representative for Pet Boys, um, who will speak a little bit about the use and operation of that use on this particular property. Um, Mr. Denlinger, did you want to swear in the witnesses? Do you want me to try to do so?
Um, I, I guess I will. I, you'll have to bear with me. I don't usually do this.
Catching you on the spot.
So it's, it's gonna, going to be abbreviated, uh, but uh, Mr. Anderson, do you swear to tell the truth as if you're under oath? Okay, thank you. And Mr. Dustrum, do you swear to tell the truth as if you're under oath? Okay, thank you. Both have been sworn.
So without further ado, I am going to direct my questions to Mr. Anderson, and I'm actually going to have you step up to the mic and I'll over to the side for easier.
Would you please identify yourself and your address for the reference?
Yep, uh, it's Arnold Anderson. Uh, I live at One Alpine Way, Phoenixville, PA. Um, and the business address is three oh nine um, West Lancaster Ave, Suite C three, Melbourne, PA, one nine three five five.
And what is your current employer and?
Uh, I'm the executive vice president of Longview Management, and I'm also the president of the general partner of Hardware Landlord LP.
Uh, provide a, just a general overview of the business operations and experience of Longview Management LP.
Yep, uh, so Longview Management LP is a third-party property manager. Um, we exclusively manage essentially affiliate properties or properties with pretty much similar ownership between the management, management and each of different properties.
I'm going to refer your attention to what we have premarked as exhibit A three, which is a copy of the deed for the property. Taking one look at that, can you verify that that indicates that the applicant, Hardware Landlord LP, is the owner of the property?
Uh, I can.
And are you authorized to appear and testify this evening on behalf of the applicant?
I am.
And just to confirm, the address of the property is seven hundred Nut Road, and this is Street five thirty, etc.?
Uh, I believe that's correct.
Referring to what we've premarked as exhibit eight four, the aerial of seven hundred Nut Road, would you please provide um, the location of the property and the various surroundings?
Yes, uh, any chance you can pull that up as well, just so? Very helpful. He, nobody has a, a um, winner. That'd be also very helpful. I really should bring one. I have a, one that you kind of use, but it's not great.
You should know by now.
I really should. So, um, so this, as many of you guys know, this is part of um, Phoenixville Plaza Town Center. Um, this is the giant road over here. And this building was a Sears Hardware building for a number of years. It was built by Sears. Um, the actual property, um, you can see it in red, uh, hung, like hugs the building more or less. Uh, the reason why this property um, goes right around the uh, building was because it was a mortgage subdivision, which was um, part of the borough ordinance, um, that is previously not part anymore. The part of the building which we're talking about is this specific area, which is approximately fifty feet wide by two hundred and twelve feet deep. Uh, this area, when it was built for Sears Hardware, uh, was the drive-through pickup for uh, lumber and hardware supplies. So as many of you guys know, um, who've lived in the borough for a while, it was a Sears Hardware for a number of years. After it was a Sears Hardware, it became a Sears hometown outlet store for appliances and as also many of you guys know that we have uh, subdivided or broken this um, former building into a number of different retailers, which include uh, Queen Appliance here, True Value here, Dollar Tree here, and then this is the final um, section of the building. Okay, the uh, one thing you know, just I'm going to say now, just so you guys have it in your mind is this wall here, there actually is a full height demising wall between this space and that space. It is uh, concrete block um, all the way to about this section. There's a little section here that's not concrete block, but I think it's relevant to note, given the use that's going in here.
Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry, just, just because the uh, laser pointer is not going to show up uh, for people participating virtually. Uh, Mr. Anderson is explaining that the uh, northwest side of the yellow box uh, ha- has the wall he was just describing, um, that abuts the other uses in the building.
Correct.
And Mr. Anderson, what is proposed for the property with this application?
So what we're proposing is to um, break this space. Uh, well, it is a separated space, but to have Pet Boys operate a automotive sales and service center. Um, really just service uh, within this and this, there will be a small fifteen hundred square feet office here that may sell some automotive supplies. Um, so the way it will function is um, customers of Pet Boys will come here, will park in front of the parking lot, which has a cross-access even for all the tenants. A um, they will walk in through the little retail office. They will uh, obviously check out um, or give the keys to one of the service techs at Pet Boys. Pet Boys will then uh, send a service technician out to get the car, and they will drive the car into the facility in where it was the former lumber drive-through pickup. Um, and then they'll, they will do service in here. They, the technician wants service to be informed, they'll drive it all the way out back and around and then park it in the lot um, in front of Pet Boys.
Your understanding that this property is in the CD Corridor Development District of the borough?
Yes, it is my understanding.
And it's proposed auto support supply store component permitted by right in this district?
Uh, auto supply, yes.
And are you here this evening for conditional use approval with relation to the sales and service components of these?
Correct.
If I can just, if you can just take one step closer to the microphone or share the microphone a little bit, just, just that the folks at home.
I don't want to, it says, do not speak directly and so.
Two of us sharing the microphone, right? Fair enough. Um, Mr. Anderson, I'm going to refer your attention to exhibit A five, which is an improvement plan for Pet Boys Service Center, which is prepared by MK Architects. That plan is dated December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. Referring to that exhibit A five and its sheet A one point zero three, which I will turn to now. Can you describe the improvements that are proposed for the property?
Uh, yes. Janet, yeah, that.
And it's A point one point zero three.
Yeah, I think we have to hopefully keep going down a little bit further.
Exhibit five.
Couple more sheets.
I believe it's PowerPoint page twenty-three.
Thank you.
Perfect.
So the question was, could you please describe the improvements that are proposed for the property?
Yep, absolutely. So um, the improvements for the property for um, the majority of the improvements are all interior. There, there's really almost nothing on the exterior of the building. Uh, we will not be changing the footprint of the building whatsoever. The only um, minor changes to the exterior will be some facade renovations, um, which is actually prior proven at building current, but in addition, we will do a little bit of curb work. A minor curb work here just to move this um, garage door over a little bit to have better access for the cars coming into the facility. So the way it will work out is cars will come in, they will go past here, they'll park here, get service, and then obviously exit it through the rear of the building. Um, so from the improvement standpoint, it's, I would say ninety-eight percent all interior, ninety-nine percent all interior.
That being said, are you anticipating requiring land development for this particular project?
I am not.
Thank you. That is all the questions I have for Mr. Anderson at this point. I will have some additional questions for him later. Um, but with the council's discretion, I'd like to call my next witness this evening, who is uh, Rob Nystrom.
First, I'd like to see if uh, council has any questions for this witness before he's dismissed.
Will be time for questions later as well?
Yes, however, typically the way it works is a single witness is presented. We ask all questions of that witness. That witness then sits down, sits down and we move to the next witness.
If it's of any help, I do have some additional questions for Mr. Nystrom, just for the flow of the hearing. We'll be going back.
Okay, I'll have questions about the tech running across the street, if you can address that at that time.
Um, I have one question, just stuff that you've already addressed, well, related to what you've addressed. You mentioned that you're the president of the general partner of Hardware Landlord LP, and I was just wondering what the general partner's uh, name is.
Boy, uh, that one, I mean, it should be like uh, Howard Landlord G P LLC.
Okay.
So I believe that's correct.
All right, thank you.
We're happy to verify that for you for purposes of the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Sure.
Uh, please state your full name and your address for the reference.
Robert Nystrom, uh, resident of Phoenixville, um, and work for Pet Boys. And that, their address, the corporate address is uh, One Presidential Boulevard, Balakin Wood, one nine zero zero four.
And what is your position with Pet Boys?
Director of Development.
Are you authorized to appear this evening and make representations on behalf of the applicant?
I am.
Are you familiar with the operations of the proposed Pet Boys?
Yes.
Expounding upon was what uh, Mr. Anderson has already testified to, would you please tell us a little bit about the services that are proposed to take place?
Yeah, it's uh, routine maintenance, general repairs, higher um, higher sales and replacements. In some cases, fleet sa- fleet um, service work, um, predominantly it's a, a auto service business.
Are you anticipating any type of major vehicle repairs or bodywork to take place at the site?
No major, typically we're not shop for major repairs, so no, and certainly no body shop. We're not, we, we don't do any bodywork. We don't do paint machine, we don't have a paint machine. But um, very limited, limited, heavy automotive.
Thank you. What are the proposed hours of operation for this particular site?
Uh, our typical standard is seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday, and if permissible, nine AM to five PM.
And how many employees do you anticipate working on the site at any given time?
Typically, and since, since there's six service bay positions, we're going to have at, at a minimum six folks. Um, but typically, I envision two people working the desk. Um, so a manager and a service writer, so anywhere from six to eight folks at any one point in time.
Mr. Nystrom, I'm going to direct your attention to exhibit A four, which was that aerial showing the property um, outlined in an orangish-yellow. Referring to that plan, do you believe that the common shared parking areas on the property are going to be sufficient to serve the needs of this business as well as the surrounding tenants?
I do, uh, only because we're not a parking intensive use. Um, again, six, there's six parking spaces in the bays if, if we're, if we're all productive. Um, beyond that, we do an average of twenty-five to thirty-five work orders a day. Um, and typically, there's a, a bunch of throughput throughout the day. Our standard use is anywhere from ten to fifteen parking spaces for a six-bay facility. So, with an adequate.
And the retail component of this use, does that tend to draw additional traffic to the site?
And it are, the, the retail is, I, I mean, it's a very loose term. The, the retail offering that we, we have in this type of, I mean, you can see the size of the, the sales floor, so to speak, but predominantly it's going to be a, a kiosk for wiper blades and a um, attire display and um, and uh, some batteries. I mean, there's not a whole lot that a, a customer in a service and tire center, which this is, can typically walk out with.
Where do you anticipate the employees to park?
They would park away from the entrance, uh, fur- you know, further moved like in the south side of the property.
And are you anticipating storage of any materials related to this use outside?
The only storage of anything outside would be um, scrap tires and they are held in an enclosure covered in the door.
And those scrap tires, how frequently are those um, picked up from the property?
It's going to depend on the um, the volume that the, the location provide, that location performs with. I mean, typically, it's going to be anywhere from once every two weeks to as many as two to three times a week, depending on volume.
Mr. Nystrom, I'm going to refer your attention to what we've premarked as exhibit six, which is a fume event plans and specifications. Referring to that exhibit A six, could you please provide like an overview of the ventilation system um, in the building to account for the performance of the vehicles?
Sure. So typically, um, your normal auto service provider will have an individual garage door for each of the bay positions. This is what we call an enclosed bay type scenario. So there's certain kind of, there, there's a certain amount of work we need to do to get, if a car is running, to get the exhaust out of the building. So the fume event basically is like a snorkel that hooks up to the exhaust pipe of the vehicle and ejects the, the exhaust out of the, out of the building. Because these cars can be sitting inside and it's not good to have carbon monoxide flowing throughout the buil- building. At the same time, there's a, you know, a make, what we call a makeup air unit that turns the air inside the, the, the uh, building certain time, a certain amount per day, so to, to, for when a vehicle is, you know, not hooked up, but there's still fresh air moving throughout the building.
Um, could you please give us a little idea of how Pet Boys would handle a cylinder and service, whether it be vehicle fluids or gasoline?
So we have what, what is a floor scrubber, which we kind of call a Zamboni. It's literally, you walk behind it and it goes and it will pick up any residual fluids on the ground. If it's a high concentration of oil, what we do first is we have a spill, every location has a spill kit that if it's oil, booms will be put around so it can all, can't go past the boom. We'll put down oil dry to a point and, and dispose of it in a drum. And once the residual level is low enough, we'll then, you know, clean it with fluids and then suck it up with that Zamboni floor scrubber machine and all the contents go in our wastewater containment system to be disposed of.
That is all the questions I have for Mr. Nystrom this evening.
Uh, so counsel, it sounds like Mr. Nystrom will not be called back up. So any questions you have as far as operations or other questions you think might be appropriate for him, this would now be the time to ask them.
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Nice from it.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Nystrom, could you talk a little bit about how the waste fluids will be stored? They will be stored inside or outside, and how they will be secured?
So basically, what we have is we have containment systems for virgin oil, which is new oil. We have containment for waste oil, waste air, and waste. And then we have a number, usually a couple drums in case of, where the drum will be put in there, we'll put the residuals in there temporarily and dispose of it. And then we have routine pickups from our waste haulers and manifest creators, because every location, when it opens, we have to do an EPA site ID show that we're disposing of our waste.
And that storage is all inside locked when the business is not open? Okay, thank you.
Now, the one clarification I can make is, I believe it's the state of Pennsylvania requires us to accept customers' used oil to add to our, so there could be cases where that's left outside. Every morning, we'll go and take it and put it in our waste oil containment system. That's the only time it's outside, but that's not, that's not there by our doing. It's there by consumers. Being able to drop off easier.
I have a question. Would there be a situation where the vehicles that are being serviced either get dropped off overnight because somebody scheduled first thing, or they couldn't, a repair couldn't be completed, or that was being done and they have to park it? So will there be, in the normal course of operations, or even exceptional course of operations, the customer vehicles that are being repaired parked outside the building overnight, or would they always stay inside?
Protocol is to have, now, if we have, it would be really remote to have more than six, our bay positions, but even so, we have the drive aisle here. Protocol is that if a vehicle is not turned that day, it's drawn inside, just for the security of the customer's vehicle.
So is there no overnight key drop available?
There is a after-hours key drop, yes. So if someone's going to work, they can drop off their keys and they'll provide a slip of what it is they want to have done and drop off the vehicle. It's an early, early bird drop.
Gotcha. A question about, like, cars like that that are left in the parking lot or just the types of cars that are coming and going frequently? And thinking about the proximity of this location specifically to, you know, the creek that's right behind it. Do you guys take any specific actions to clean parking lots or to ensure parking lots are if they're contaminated with dripping oil or fluids coming off of the cars either before they're repaired or after they're repaired? Any steps that you guys take outside of the actual facility, like in the, in the parking lot in particular, to, I don't know, address environmental contamination issues?
In case, well, again, well, the parking lot here would be out of our control. It's common area, but if there was something that was done by our doing, in a case like that with regard to the parking lot, we would then have our environmental, environmental company come steam clean the lot, the area of the lot, and then remove the residue. It's very hard to, you know, pin it on, I mean, look, I know we're an automotive service provider, but if you go in any parking lot, you'll see some staining.
On the, Mr. Mark, go ahead.
Discuss the, the exhaust system that you're using. Is that something that Pep Boys has used in other locations? I mean, do you have experience with this? And is it, is it just a, I may want to make sure about safety and so forth in terms of the modifications?
Well, I mean, the, this type of setup, the fume event is required when the bays are interned. If you have individual bay doors, you'll typically have a cutout in the bay door that literally just takes the the same type of snorkel that hooks up to the exhaust pipe right to the bay door. This, since, I mean, there's longer runs having to move more air, so you have an assist or a fan, an impeller that moves the air out because it's, it's a much longer run. But, you know, it's, it's, the sole design is to try and mitigate carbon monoxide.
One final question. Are, are you, is this a franchise or are you all company owned? Okay.
So I'm going to follow up on the vent question. So I'm familiar with the systems, but if you can just describe the, the exit of the vent system. What, how does it get captured on the outside? What's the filter system? What's rough, like, is it loud? When the, when the pipe vents, really?
No more so than an exhaust fan that you would have in, you know, the roof of your house or.
And does it just daylight? Okay, so no, no additional filtration system or anything? It's just a straight daylight vent system?
Other questions, Scott? Nystrom, you discussed the storage of fluids and the cleanup. If there's a spill in the site, is, are there sloped floors or kind of an inch curb to get into the building so that if there are fluids on the ground, they're stopped or limited from spilling over to the outside?
Well, I believe the makeup of the building is, is the, the building is slightly above grade. There's a ramp up and ramp down, but the floor in, in the space itself would be relatively flat.
Okay, so, so there aren't any measures as far as lips on the entrance and exits? Okay.
And the intent is a natural gas heater for the forced air, or is it, I guess, radiant air? Or is that not, that's the other, that's for Arnie. Um, I, I can skip that. I got others for her. Arnie's going to have to come back up either way, so we can jump back to that. Is there inspections on, is there providing state inspections?
That, yes.
That's one of the items, okay. But no, no booth, no paint booth, no, okay. I'm glad you mentioned on the tire stacks, it's obviously the sort of bane of the existence of, you know, they tires have to exist, but the tire stacks are, can be really unsightly. If you have a busy weekend and you have excess tires that don't fit within the enclosure, what is the, the corporate protocol or your protocol that, that is then done with them? Nobody likes to see stacks of tires.
Sure. So what happens is, hey, first off, in, in the enclosure, we lace them because you can get a lot more tires than stacking them, so you lace them to intertwine them. And if there is a case where there's just no storage in it, they're going to, will have ample room to store them, not in the drive aisle, but past the last bay door. And at that point in time, if the storage is full, there, the, the service manager's directed to call an emergency number for a pickup and they're guaranteed a pickup within twelve to twenty-four hours.
Okay, so there's, there's room inside for overflow, and that's the procedure is, is interior overflow?
Yeah, and once we get, I mean, if it approaches that point, the service manager's on top of it to get an emergency pickup schedule.
Is there an exhibit that shows where the tire enclosure will be on the site?
Is the entire enclosure on this site?
We can do that exhibit A four, which is a general overview of the property and probably have Arnie showing out where that area is going to be. No, just the, the aerial. Arnie, do you want to come up here for a minute? And once we get that pulled up, you can kind of provide direction.
Yeah. Okay, so we have the requirement in our lease with Pep Boys to do, I want to say it's a eight by twelve, but I have to look at that specific dimensions, small enclosure right, right about here behind the existing building. So obviously, as you guys know, most shopping centers have dumpsters and whatnot behind here, so it'd be a little larger than like two, I would say, four yard dumpsters next, side by side. It'll be right along the curb line right here. So, and we can provide further details, but we, we have the requirement to build it per Pep Boys prototypes back.
So kind of in between that tree in the building?
So it would be on existing pavement that's there, so just it'll come right up to the curb line right here and be on existing pavement. We're trying not to, to affect any previous coverage on site.
So that'd be where the loading dock doors were or are?
No, so, so, okay, so there were two loading dock doors here that are used, ones for True Value, ones for Dollar Tree. This is the exterior ramp for Pep Boys, but right here, it's hard to see. There is some additional curb here between this that goes curves around, and we're going to put it right here on that curb line. So it's, it's outside the loading dock.
So you're referring kind of to the northeast corner of the building that's outlined in yellow on exhibit three.
And I only harp on this because I know that there's a couple man doors, there's a lot of heavy electric going into the building, so I'm just trying to, you know, get a clear picture of where. Yeah, the further tucked away, the better.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah. Is, is there, Jen, is there any chance you can pull Google Earth from behind there? I know that might be a lot to ask, but it'd be much appreciated. Yes.
While she's doing that, if I can just pivot to a couple other questions that, I'm not sure who would answer best, but is there intentions of adding any additional traffic control or a crosswalk or striping in front, right directly in front of the, the retail store there, if you have techs and customers?
Um, so at the present time, no, primarily because it was previously approved for a drive-through pickup. So our feeling was that this was prior, previously approved for the drive-through pickup. We are kind of, if anything, decreasing the amount of use because it's going to be, and we're both decreasing the use. We're not going to have a general public driving cars into the building. We're going to have certified technicians from Pep Boys driving them into the building. So what we're, we definitely want to try to avoid is having any kind of requirement to have customers have to drive vehicles in the building.
I just meant for pedestrians, like you, you walking from, parking your car and walking to the front door is more the instance that I was, and the tech then walking back out.
Coming back out, yeah.
Yeah, I think I hadn't planned on it, but if, if, if we need to stripes and additional crosswalks there, that's
Great.
would make perfect sense.
If you want to go back to our, our tire shed here.
So as you can see, here are the two loading docks. So our plan is to do a small enclosure here for, four-sided enclosure with this, for all these tires. So what, I think it's split into two parts, but it'd be four-sided enclosure right here for all the tires.
And then, so Google Earth is actually a good example. If, if Jen's able to swing around and view the other side of the building here. This won't come as a surprise, Arnie. There's a small little section of sidewalk that's missing from the rear of the building to, my assumption is that people aren't going to necessarily wait for their tires. They might go to Giant, go to the rest of your shopping center. On that pork chop on the top right there, the sidewalk ends at the building and then doesn't continue to the stop bar. It's something we can discuss at the next meeting, of course, but just to broach the subject, it would probably be nice to have pedestrian access down the entire side of that.
Actually, I walk, just as an educator, I go to the dollar store a lot and then go to Giant to get my steps in, or go get my wine at the Wine and Spirits. And that whole side of the building doesn't have pedestrians, so like I'm walking in the street when I walk by.
It was never intended to have.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking to Mr. Ewad's point, if there's guests that are waiting, they're probably not just going to always wait. They're going to walk over and get a pretzel or walk over and access the rest of the, the shopping center. So it's just a thought.
We can discuss it more later.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have any good solutions there because it is a very narrow, I think it's only like two feet. So we certainly don't want to encourage people walking on in case they fall off into harm's way there. So we'll have to talk about, I'd rather give some time to our civil engineer on it.
And speaking to pedestrians, since I'm up and down that strip all the time, I live in Westridge. You might, with the re-striping, you might want to reconsider the single, the single entrance, which is kind of offset between the dollar store and True Value. There's just a lot of crossing off of that, so that you might want to reconsider, now that we've got four entrances off of that parking lot, maybe go into like two striped crosswalks that are a little bit closer and people will more naturally go to them. I mean, people are pretty steady about stopping at that stop sign, but the, the, the pedestrian traffic from the parking lot across that street, which is very busy. That's something I think, if you're doing this, now that you're going to fully occupy that building and with car traffic, you might really want to consider adjusting your, your sidewalk striping there.
I, I think the question would be, have you considered that?
Uh, to be honest, I haven't considered it, but obviously after this, we will. So I think the, well, this is not, this is not a fair answer. I would say, well, it's not part of our property because it's Harvard Landlord LP, but that's not really a fair excuse in this situation. So, but you know, I think we, I think we will come back, or at least present something from our civil that shows a couple striped crosswalks. But I think we will maintain the existing ADA spaces. These are not the additional ADA spaces. It will just be additional striped crosswalks, and I guess we'll, I got to look at how many, I don't want to put, we may change the stop signs, have two there instead of, I think there's only one. But let me talk to our civil engineer on that, see what the best, best method is for that.
Ms. Gerber, do you have any further questions for Mr. Anderson?
I do. I have a lot of them. You're not going to like them.
I think.
But we do need to go through the, the conditional use requirement.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, are you familiar with the requirements for a conditional use set forth in the borough zoning ordinance?
I am.
And in your opinion generally, does this application meet those standards?
Uh, I believe they do, yes.
Is this consistent with the borough's comprehensive plan for the district?
Uh, yes.
Is the property suitable for the proposed use and is the proposed use consistent with the objectives and goals of the zoning ordinance?
Uh, from my perspective, I believe it is.
There's access to and from the building, from the parking area without too much interaction with vehicle traffic. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct, although it is, it is through fair, but obviously, as we've discussed in this meeting, we're going to have to look at some additional unnecessary traffic calming devices, some additional crosswalks there with potential stop signs.
And the zoning district contemplates this particular use for what you're here tonight by conditional use approval, which means it's a use that is, is permitted in this district, presuming that you can meet these various standards. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you anticipate this use is going to be contrary to the public health, safety, morals, or public welfare in any way?
I do not.
Is there anything inherently dangerous about this particular use?
Uh, none, I believe.
And do you believe that the use is going to provide a benefit to the public by providing a service in this area of township that is needed?
Uh, I believe it is. I think it at, at Faisal Plaza, we're always looking, trying to add additional uses there. To be honest, we had also looked at some fitness uses, but unfortunately, we're too close to Giants. We were not, weren't able to look at those. So, but I believe that having automobile repels and services is a nice thing to have there.
Is there sufficient road capacity for this particular use?
Yes, I believe so. Based on the existing building actually being, we shrunk the building by, I want to say, two or three thousand square feet from when it was a Sears Hardware by removing part of the former greenhouse. So we're looking at a smaller. So we're looking at a smaller building than we had before, um, this was all done prior, so, but yes.
Do you anticipate any adverse impact to traffic in the immediate neighborhood or an impact to the levels of service for the surrounding intersection?
Uh, I do not.
Based on Mr. Nystrom testimony, is it apparent that this use is not going to be a large traffic generator?
Uh, I would agree with that.
I'm referring to Exhibit A four, which is the aerial of the property. Um, can you just very briefly, I think you did this previously, but let's just reinforce it, um, walk us through how the traffic is going to circulate on the site? Maybe we can describe it?
Yeah, okay, so.
So the, go ahead.
Yeah, so the way it will very sim- simply stated, I guess, uh patrons will drive up their car to the parking lot in front of Pep Boys, they will walk into the facility, they will uh talk with um a Pep Boys um, uh service member, the service member will check the personnel, get the keys, they'll send a service technician out to get the car. The service technician will drive the car into the facility, will do, perform the service, then exit out the rear of the building, drive the car to the front of the building, parking lot, and then obviously, uh, when the customer comes back, provides the keys to the customer.
Based on your testimony, is it your understanding that the use of the service personnel for the Pep Boys will um contribute to the safety of the site by diminishing any sort of, you know, reckless driving by the patrons in and out of the building?
Uh, I do.
Do emergency service vehicles have access to the site and are they able to circulate around the property?
Uh, they do have access, they are able to, to circulate around the building, and in addition, given that given the specific use of Pep Boys in the facility, um, we will meet obviously the building code requirements for um the sprinkler requirements and power alarm requirements.
Does the property border any residential uses or residentially zoned areas?
Uh, it does not border any residential uses, although I believe the CD district does have the ability to have residential in it.
Does this particular use require any additional supervision or oversight based on the nature of it?
Uh, no.
And do you anticipate that this proposed use is going to generate uh need for sanitary sewage disposal facilities or municipal water supplied beyond that prior use of the property?
Uh, as the property as a whole, no, um, although we'll do some further research to make sure there's not one additional EDU required, so.
And to your testimony, to the extent it's required, you would be able to accommodate that?
Correct.
Do you anticipate this use to create any increase in surface water runoff or erosion on the property?
Uh, I do not.
And outside of the conditional use that's sought here this evening, is there any other zoning relief associated with this particular project?
Uh, no, just a building permit.
That is all the questions I have for Mr. Anderson.
I have uh two quick questions, uh, first, I think it's more just the reaffirmation of what I believe you said before is that there is a cross access and parking easement over the common area?
Correct, and I can provide you that.
Okay, so, thank you. Um, and then you were talking about emergency services, is the garage doors to the building, are they large enough for many emergency services vehicles to actually enter the building?
Uh. It's all right, it's all right. Fire marshal, I can't imagine it actually is, because we are shrinking it in the current, um currently, it might actually be large enough, but the new garage door will be twelve feet wide. So actually, it should be fine for fire truck getting in, I just had to check the height, so that would be have that elevation. It will be twelve feet wide by twelve feet high, so I think um we could ask the, I guess, the fire marshal if that's large enough for a um fire truck to get in, so.
Okay, so I know council's already had an opportunity to ask questions, but just to make sure, are there any further questions?
The only other one I had, I, I don't know if there's existing floor drains or if that was mentioned, I, I don't, I
So there are existing floor drains that we're capping all of them, so they will be fully capped.
It's a sealed floor.
Full, fully sealed floor, so.
Um, Ms. Gerber, would you approach really quickly?
I've spoken with the council solicitor, and we are going to introduce a screenshot of the rear of the property, which shows, uh, which we were speaking to previously, Mr. Anderson testified as the location of the post higher enclosure. So we are going to introduce that Google screenshot of the rear of the property as applicants exhibit A seven. And with that, I would ask that applicants exhibit A one through A seven be admitted to the record.
Any objections? So moved. Uh, is, does that conclude your case?
That fully concludes my case, thank you very much for your time this evening, appreciate it.
All right, with that, we would open the floor up to any uh members of the public that would like to make any public comment on this application. Uh, you can express, this is your opportunity to, if you like, uh, you do not have to express your opinion on the application. Uh, seeing none in person or in line, excuse me, online. Um, it's my understanding that council typically takes these matters under advisement. Is that council's pleasure here this evening? It seems as so it is, uh, so with that, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing until the I have the wrong date. April.
April eleventh.
Eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-three at seven PM and resume our public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So it's mine again? Yeah. With that, uh, we'll move on to section twelve of uh tonight's uh Borough Council meeting agenda. We have reports of committees, boards and commissions, we'll start off with Planning Commission, Mr. Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, we had a meeting uh last Thursday, uh, a re- first meeting in uh three months, so, and a reorganization uh, in part, mainly due to the uh passing of our chair, our former chairperson, uh, Bill. And so we had a reorganization and the following uh appointments were made. Uh, our new chairperson is Tom Carnaval, who was an existing um vice chair of the uh, of the planning commission. The new vice chair is Catherine Bianco. Um, as the other appointments included, uh, representative to the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee from the commission will be Deb Johnson, uh, representative uh, from the planning commission to Harb will be Joe Sikora, and we had an appointment, two people, um Kath Bianco and Deb Johnson are reported to the upcoming zoning ordinance task force, uh, which will be uh, I think getting started, uh, according to Mr. Crack, um, and will be an important process of taking our comprehensive plan and addressing the zoning and uh saldo changes that may be called for. Uh, other than that, um, there were several projects in front of us, um. I believe only one was approved, but was in, approved in a very, you know, compressed timeframe, so it will not be in front of the uh council until the following month, correct, Bluebird? Yes, so we discussed the Bluebird expansion, um, people are interested, um, there are there's um, some exhibits on the uh, um, new projects portion of the, of the Borough Council site, if you're interested in terms of seeing what they're looking to plan to do. Uh, there was also a discussion, uh, a, a new um sketch plan for a project. Some additional commercial on uh seven hundred block of Star Street, uh, uh, the empty lot on the outer edge of the Acme Shopping Center lot, uh, it's a proposed building, so it's an initial sketch, eighty uh, just about nine thousand square foot commercial building and parking lot running along Star Street. Um, and then we also had a discussion, as I mentioned earlier, of the six seventy-five High Street uh special exception uh, application, so um, the, that's the only projects that were discussed, uh, we also did confirm our twenty twenty-three meeting dates. So the next uh meeting will be Thursday, April thirteenth. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. With that, uh, Ms. Dugan with Harb?
There was no meeting.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kirkner with uh Regional Planning Committee.
The Regional Planning Committee has been working on a regional uh trails um, plan, and as part of that, or I guess related to that, the Chester County Planning Committee, Commission is, it's multimodal transportation committee is starting to hold public hearings, public meetings on a county uh trails master plan, Chester County Trails Master Plan. First public meetings tonight, so I don't know if anybody um had a chance to go to that, but I sure didn't. Uh, but I assume there will be more meetings coming on that, so uh so that, that's something to keep an eye on, Chester County Trails Master Plan. That's all I got, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Ms. Dugan with uh Rec Board?
I have a few programs to highlight this month, um, we have got the Youth Coed Flag Football League that's beginning um on uh, on Sundays in April, starting the the fourth, uh, or no, the second of April. And uh, then the Safe Sitter Program will be held on Saturday, April twenty-second, from ten AM to four PM, and that's designed to prepare students in grade six to eight to be safe when they're at home alone, watching younger siblings or babysitting. Um, and then there's the Phoenix Ultimate Academy, which is a beginner and intermediate program for ultimate frisbee frisbee instruction at the rec center, and that starts on Monday's, April twenty-seventh, from four to five. Uh, we're offering a self-defense clinic, which is a comprehensive instructional guide to the art and science of self-defense for men, women and children. No experiences necessary for this free special community event on Saturday, April fifteenth, from twelve to two. Uh, the Phoenixville Junior Pickleball Clinics, that it begins on Friday's after-school sessions on April fourteenth through May nineteenth, from four to five, for ages eight to fourteen. Um, then there's Spring Adaptive Tennis, which is a game that can be adapted to accommodate any age, environment, condition or disability. And it's for individuals, physical, mental, any sort of disability situational issues. Uh, and that's uh outdoors at Madvom Fisher Parks, uh, Thursdays for a six-week program, starting March thirtieth. And finally, the Community Garden, this is a new and revitalized community garden, was created for working, was created working in partnership with the, and the trellis beds can be rented, and fifty percent of what is grown will be donated back into the community. And that's all I have for tonight.
Great, thanks Dana, and the trellis beds look tremendous, it's a great reimagining of the uh community garden system, so. With that, uh, Ms. Berkeley with Tree Advisory Commission?
Tree Advisory Commission, um, does have several things, there's going to be a community volunteer pruning happening in March, and then our spring planting will be happening on April twenty-second, which is Earth Day, very traditional for us. Um, I also learned a lot, um, thanks to Mr. Crack about the calipare trees that um will be unfortunately be coming down, they're being outlawed, I, I don't want the public to be upset when they see those trees coming down, but we are we do have a very good plan to be adding dogwood and cherry trees in their place. Um, and I'm very excited to say that we potentially will be doing a ceremonious dogwood planting after the Dogwood Parade, which is very traditional, bringing us back to our roots because of that initiative, so. More to come on that.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley, and uh going into Personnel and Public Safety?
So I don't have any specific action to report, but I'm just gonna say it again because we need it, I know you've said it a couple times, we do need one member uh for zoning hearing board, one for rec board, we did fill our Tree Advisory Commission tonight. Um, one for Harb and three for our Human Relations Commission, so that's really important, please reach out to myself or a, a familiar council member, your council member because we can certainly walk you through that, um, and get people involved, because I know there's lots of people that do want to get involved.
Sure, and Mr. Crack, you have something to add?
Uh, you would need a motion for the former item BB two, which was dogwood, which got moved to here because they'll pull off the consent.
That goes into Parks and Rec.
Wrong P.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. With that, we'll move into Parks and Rec, I believe, Mr. Moore, you might have an item for us?
Yeah, uh, I, actually, two items, uh, we did, most, most of the previous meeting was uh concerning the temporary community event applications. Um, there's a new event, uh, and a lot of the ones that were adopted were, were um ones that we've had before, but there is a we did adopt tonight on the uh consent agenda, the uh Earth Festival at Reservoir Park, I just wanted to note that uh, Saturday, April twenty-second, along with a lot of other act, uh, activities, so that's from ten AM to four PM. Uh, we did also discuss, um, an initial discussion about Parks and Recreation Rules and Regulations, particularly, and this'll have some more work done about use of trails, particularly, we have a trail, our rules are dawn to dusk, but we have a trail going by Steel Point out to Maury Road, which will probably be utilized on a regular basis after sunset, so we have to start thinking about that, so that was a, just a general discussion about that, but then, uh, yes, I would like to make a motion to recommend to Borough Council approve a temporary community event application for the annual Dogwood Festival from May seventeenth through May twentieth, twenty twenty-three, six PM to ten PM, Wednesday to Friday, and twelve noon to ten PM on Saturday, streets to be closed. Our second and third avenue between Main and Star Streets throughout the event, for the Dogwood Parade, Franklin Avenue between Fillmore Street and Bridge Street, Grant Street, between Fairview Street and Anne Street, and Main Street from Bridge Street to Fifth Avenue at eleven PM to two PM, eleven, that should be eleven AM to two PM on Saturday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-two, for the parade, conditioned upon receipt of valor certificate of insurance, naming borough as initial insured.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Webb, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstained.
Abstained, seven zero one, thank you, Mr. Moore, anything else?
Nothing, nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kirkner with policy?
Policy Committee, I, I believe that our next meeting, March twenty-eighth, will be um canceled.
That is correct.
Because of uh lack of form, but it's, it's not that we're just blowing it off, it's uh it, that's the chamber dinner that night, and uh members will be in attendance at the chamber dinner to receive the award that's the chambers bestowing upon the borough, so. Um, for that reason, there will be no policy committee on, at seven PM Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kirkner. Uh, Infrastructure Technologies, Transportation Sustainability, Mr. Weiss?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh, one item, uh, tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal for renovations at two eighteen Church Street, subject to an easement agreement with the borough and to a professional services agreement whereby the applicant agrees to cover the necessary legal costs and recording fees.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley, questions about this motion? I know it's not something that we normally get, but it's a nice, it seems like a nice addition, or uh, sorry, a nice um construction uh point here, so.
Yeah, I'd like to, I appreciate the, the building owner making the investment to preserve the wrought iron. Uh, it's, that's always a challenge, but I appreciate it.
That's a nice feature to have, there used to be a lot more of them. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero, anything else, Mr. Weiss?
Uh, nope, just uh that our next meeting will be one week from tonight on the twenty-first of March at seven PM.
Thank you.
President.
And Ms. Dugan with Finance?
Well, we've covered everything in the consent agenda except for the fact that we have to cancel the meeting coming up for the same reason that we're canceling the policy committee, it was uh unfortunate.
meeting coming up for the same reason that we're canceling the policy committee. It was, uh, unfortunate scheduling on their part.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. With that, we'll open up our second and final round of public participation. Members of the public who are joining us here in person, please step up to the microphone or the podium and sign in and let us know your name and address. Uh, those joining us virtually on this, uh, Zoom webinar platform, please raise your hand digitally and a member of our staff will uh, select you, unmute you and announce your name, allowing you to make comment to council tonight. So anybody in, uh, in the public joining us, uh, in person here or anybody on Zoom that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand and we will, uh, okay, well, I believe we have one online, uh, staff can proceed.
Dr. Senek, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank, thank you. Um, I just have one comment and perhaps it, uh, anyway, regarding Bluebird and is, I don't know whether they're expanding just their, I guess their eating facility or expanding the brewery function. Can you clarify that or is it both?
I, that hasn't been in front of the council yet. They'll be in front of council next month. That was only in front of planning commission so far.
I just, I would just mention one thing, I think, because they brew there, correct? They do, they, they make the product there.
They do, they do.
Yeah, and, uh, my, my, what, I read an article, uh, this is concerning, uh, Jack Daniels. Uh, I think it's in Tennessee or Kentucky, I'm not sure. But, uh, they apparently, I don't think, I don't know whether Bluebirds of that scale or, or it's, or you have to be a certain scale to have the problem, but there's, there's a release of ethanol during the aging of the whiskey. And it's kind of, if you, if you Google it, it is a, they call it angel share, you can and, uh, apparently this release of the ethanol uh, look, causes a growth of a fungus associated with that, which can get on to a lot of things. And I just think that is something that the borough might want to take into consideration. Maybe it's not, doesn't apply to their situation. And maybe there's ways of mediating that, but apparently if you look into that on what's going on with, uh, a larger scale of that, currently brewing beer versus distilling spirits, um, is a much different operation. And it has some things there that perhaps, if you read the articles, uh, regarding this fungus, I can't remember his body eye, can't remember the name of the fungus, but, uh, it, maybe it's something that the, uh, Borough Council should be apprised of. Maybe it's nothing, but, uh, perhaps it needs to be, uh, looked at. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Santa. Okay, I see no other folks, uh, joining us here in person or on Zoom, raising their hands for public partition, public participation. We will close the second and final round of public participation, takes us to communications, uh, our second round of communications and council participation. Um, with it being, uh, the start of spring, I just want to remind everybody that, uh, it is pothole repair season, so uh, please remember that we do offer an, an easy way to send in your issues on our, uh, homepage of our website is the Notify Borough Function button. Uh, and that gives you a list of ways to, uh, submit claims. That is the fastest, easiest way to get any issues that you may see around the community addressed, uh, and in front of the right department. So again, right on our homepage, there is the notify the borough and that, that helps, uh, report any potholes or other issues that may occur uh, out in the streets. Um, with that, staff reports are in your packets. Any questions for, uh, department heads? Anything for manager? Okay. Any questions? Uh, we do not have a need for executive session tonight. What is council's pleasure?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Thank you very much, everybody. We will see you next month. Have a great night.